We've got a couple of them, and I apologize for that as well. We've got them piling up because we're starting to work on our 2022 budget. So we've got a number of budget meetings scheduled. We've got a number of other meetings that we are scheduling and have scheduled. But I thought it was very important that you all heard the presentation from Evergreen, the compensation and classification study. It is a key factor in the decisions that we will make going forward. So I encourage you all to listen carefully and participate. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Fisher and Mr. Harder to kick us off, and then Evergreen will do our presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor stated, this work session is for Evergreen Solutions to present the findings for the classification and compensation study they did on behalf of the city last year. As is best practice, the city periodically performs these comp and class studies to ensure that our compensation for employees is market competitive so that we can attract and retain the talented workforce we have and need going forward. In early 2020, the city engaged the services of Evergreen Solutions for this purpose, and they have extensive experience, not only in Georgia but across the country, in doing these kind of studies for municipalities, state governments, as well as K through 12 and higher education institutions. So with that, I'll introduce Dr. Angel Yazbek from Evergreen Solutions to present the findings. Dr. Yazbek.
All right, thank you very much, Jeff. Can everyone see me and hear me okay?
Can we hear?
I think we could use a little more audio.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So I will go ahead and next share my screen and make sure everyone can see that. Does everyone see the screen okay? Yes. All right, wonderful. So because we have so many people on this call, I think the most efficient approach would be for me to go ahead and walk through the presentation, and at the end, I'll go ahead and take any questions that you might have for me with regards to the study that we conducted.
That works for me, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So without further ado, as Mr. Harder mentioned, my name is Dr. Angel Yazbek. I'm one of the consultants on the Evergreen team that worked on this study for the city of Roswell. And for this presentation, here's our brief agenda. And essentially, I want to first go through the study process, just give you a high-level review of what we did throughout the course of the entire study from early 2020 until now. Next, we'll go through some of the specifics of the employee outreach that we conducted when we visited the city back in March 2020, before the pandemic went a little haywire. Next, I'll go ahead and discuss some of our findings from an analysis of current conditions. Also go through the city's compensation philosophy, the results of our classification and compensation reviews. And then finally, the question that everyone's eager to know, which is, what are our revised pay plans and what is our recommended implementation method? So we have completed most of the tasks associated with the study. So first, we conducted the employee outreach, which again was back in March 2020. And then we also assessed the current conditions of the pay system, which means we looked at the pay ranges as well as where employee salaries fell within that pay range to assess how does the distribution of those salaries within each pay grade look overall? We also reviewed the city's current compensation philosophy as well as discussed directions moving forward with how the city would like to compensate employees. We also conducted an internal equity review by reviewing the job assessment tools, or JATs. And we also conducted an external equity analysis in which we surveyed peer municipalities to survey what are the market competitiveness of salary ranges, and I'll go into more detail about those findings later on. Based on our findings from the job assessment tool as well as the market survey that I just discussed, we revised the general pay plan as well as developed a separate pay plan for police sworn positions, which is certainly appropriate. And what we're seeing throughout the country is to have a separate pay plan for general employees and then for sworn personnel. And then we individually assigned each classification, both the general classifications as well as the police sworn classifications into appropriate pay grades within each pay plan. And then we also developed appropriate methods for implementing the revised pay plans and pay ranges that really flow nicely with the city's compensation philosophy. We also estimated some annualized salary costs for implementing the proposed pay plan. And we have prepared a final report, which I believe all council members have received ahead of time. So with employee outreach, myself and our other consultant, Brad Brackens, visited the city of Roswell in March, and we had discussions with employees and department heads about, you know, what's kind of working well in the city of Roswell with regards to compensation classification and what could be improved. So overall, employees really do enjoy serving their local community, and they appreciate the benefits package that the city offers. However, there was some concern with regards to the salaries. So for instance, there was the perception that there is a salary compression or not a lot of difference between employees who are newly hired compared to those who with more tenure at the city. And likewise, there was an overall very large concern that the salaries in general were not competitive with the market, especially with regards to local government municipalities. So in addition to outreach, we conducted what we called an assessment of current conditions. So with this analysis, we reviewed the type of pay plan that was administered, which is an open-range plan. Now, an open-range plan means that there is an established minimum, sometimes midpoint and maximum, but salaries are otherwise free to fall anywhere within that pay range. And overall, there were 27 pay grades with range spreads of 60%. And what that means is that the difference between the minimum and the maximum is 60%, which is, again, very consistent with what we see in the market, particularly in that metro Atlanta area. And then when we reviewed the distribution of employees' salaries, we see that overall, this distribution is very consistent with a performance-based salary progression, which is certainly in line with the city's current compensation philosophy. So when we look at that, there's not necessarily an alarm with how salaries are progressing. However, we still wanted to look into the question of, are these salaries competitive? So as part of this process, we wanted to review the city's compensation philosophy to ensure that any recommendations we provide are in line with that compensation philosophy. So for instance, the city, you all expressed that you would like to be competitive at the average of the market, and that you would like to continue to have equitable and flexible pay practices, which ties into the pay plan design of having that open-range structure for both general classifications as well as sworn police classifications. So it's nice to have that open range, particularly if you intend to continue using merit to progress salaries, because then you're kind of free to have some flexibility in terms of what percentage increase you would like to give to employees as they continue throughout their tenure at the city of Roswell. And the pay increase methods are currently performance-based, which is certainly appropriate and certainly what we see within the area as well as across the country with various municipalities. With regards to the classification review, what we did was, after we conducted the employee outreach, we asked employees to complete a job assessment tool through which they were describing to us what are their duties and responsibilities. So while we did have job descriptions from the city, we know that with various industries, job requirements are changing all the time. Duties and responsibilities change with new technologies, et cetera. So it's very important for us to hear back from employees and their supervisors, what are these duties and responsibilities that employees are performing day in and day out? And that helps us get an assessment of an appropriate classification hierarchy or internal equity. And then also at that time, we made any appropriate title change recommendations. So for instance, in some cases, we saw that some titles could be clarified a little bit more. We saw some room for a tiered system or some expansion. So for instance, having two levels for a position as opposed to one level. And that was all addressed in the classification review. We also conducted our market survey for our compensation review. So we conducted a salary survey and collected salary range data from the 13 peers that are displayed in that exhibit. And we also benchmarked 46 classifications. So while it would be really nice just to do a comprehensive census of all the classifications at the city, reasonably, we do a sub, we survey a subset of them to make sure that we get representative data, and we ensure that at least there's a representation across all departments and pay grades within that sample. And we see that, on average, the number of matches that we had for each position was 6.3. So it's important to note that not all respondents necessarily had a good match for all benchmark classifications, which is why we see that average number 6.3 as opposed to 13. Now, when we compare the salary ranges, on average, from all the peers compared to the city of Roswell, we found that the city was in fact behind the market for those salary ranges. So looking at that chart there, I'm going to go ahead and pick on the minimum there. So we're looking at differential at the range minimum, and we see negative 9.2%. That means that, on average, the classifications at the city of Roswell, at the minimum, are 9.2% behind the market peers. Now, this does not apply for all positions. Some were a little bit ahead in the market, some were even more behind the market. But that is, on average, how far the classifications were in relation to other peers. So based on these findings, we then proposed our revised pay plans, well revised for the general employees and a new one for police sworn. So this is a chart showing the proposed pay plan for the general employees. So we essentially just kind of revised it a little bit. So the overall structure was pretty good. But considering that the salary ranges were behind the market by about 9%, we increased those salary ranges by 9% to essentially adjust for the market. So we retained that open-range design, and then we looked at all those classifications, and then we individually assigned them to a pay grade based on the market information that we collected as well as the JAT information. So all classifications were either in the same pay grade as before, or they might have been increased a pay grade or two, depending on what we found in the market data as well as what we ascertained through our JAT analysis. So you also requested to have a separate pay plan for police sworn, which again is a trend that we're seeing across the country, because a lot of times with those law enforcement positions, those salaries tend to change more frequently compared to those of general classifications. So the police sworn have a separate pay plan with a similar design of an open-range structure with range spreads of 60%. And we assigned the law enforcement or police positions to a pay grade accordingly based on the market data and the JAT information we collected. So this leads us to our chosen implementation method. So initially, we presented a few different options, but upon further discussion, it was decided that something called current range penetration would be the best option for the city. So what this really means is that we're trying to preserve an employee's position within their pay range. So first, we perform a calculation to determine the percentage through which an employee's current salary falls within their pay range. And so when we transition the employees to the new pay plan, we want to preserve that positioning. So for example, if an employee is 40% of the way through their pay range currently, we want to ensure that when the new pay plan is implemented, they are likewise 40% of the way through that pay range to preserve that structure. So we like to recommend this one, particularly with an organization that has a performance-based method of progressing salaries, because based on performance evaluations, employees are in a very specific place for a reason, and we wouldn't want to disrupt that. So that is why we recommend this particular option. All right, and then I'm sure Mr. Hardner, Mr. Fisher may type in at this point, but these are the estimated annualized cost for adjusting the salaries. And this includes the 9% salary increase for full-time and part-time staff as well as benefits. And then also, I want to speak to a little bit about continuing to progress salaries. So while it's nice that we have a new pay plan and we have some ideas or a very strong idea for how to implement new salaries, it's important to continue progressing employees' salaries so that we don't end up in a position where the city is so far behind the market again. So for instance, continuing to administer merit-based salary increases based on performance evaluations is definitely a very good way to continue progressing salaries. And so therefore, the employee's performance rating will be linked to how much salary increase they get. And then also what's important is to provide a COLA annually as needed. So not every single year is a COLA necessary, but if the need comes up where, say, employees' salaries and the pay structure should increase by 2% to keep up with cost of living, it's important to do that and make sure that the city is staying competitive in the relative area. All right, that is the formal presentation. I will go ahead and take any questions from the council or anyone else at this time.
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Thank you very much. Very good presentation, a lot of good information. Just have a couple of questions. As far as benefits and those other costs, how did Roswell compare to the 13 municipalities there? And were there any things that Roswell does as a city that the other municipalities didn't do, that they don't offer? And then the other, just another part of my question is, just to confirm that Roswell doesn't do COLA increases currently. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So I'll speak to first the benefits portion. So we did a brief analysis of the benefits, and overall, the city of Roswell is competitive with the benefits offerings. And something that really struck out is how much they invest in wellness programs. That was something that stuck out as pretty neat to the city of Roswell. So for instance, there were some pretty nice incentives for participating in races and other such activities that with other organizations, they're less progressive with. So I would say that's something that the city does quite well with. And then in terms of COLA, yes, I'm aware that currently the city does not do COLA, or give COLA, I should say.
Additional questions? Councilmember Claire.
Thank you, Mayor. I have really a continuation of Councilmember Hall's question. So you mentioned that we probably invest more in the wellness than those peers, and you said we're competitive on the other ones. From a competitive out of curiosity, so the way our retirement program works is that tenured employees are continuing to receive pension benefits, and the newer employees get a very attractive defined contribution plan. And out of curiosity, is that similar with other municipalities and other governments? Or did more of them completely leave the pension area? Did someone stay? The ones that left, did they go as competitive? What did you kind of see from that standpoint?
So we see that overall, new employees are definitely not being offered pension plans. Those are something that's a very rich benefit that we're just seeing on the whole kind of fading out of favor. So a lot of other organizations, they are doing the defined contributions, so they are contributing to that, encouraging their employees to contribute to those. Some of them, it's kind of a mixture. A couple of them do have the defined, or the pension, I should say, but a lot of them are trending more toward the defined contribution plans overall.
And so, and expanding into that, so certainly, it sounds like most cities are like Roswell in the sense that new employees get the defined contribution. Do, did most of them, for the tenured employees, keep the pensions? Or did most of them kind of close out the pension plan and just move to defined contribution for all employees despite the tenure?
So most of them have a grandfather clause. So for instance, after a certain date, if you were hired before a certain date, you can stay with the pension, but after a certain date, you know, it's all defined contribution.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you give us an idea of the $5.6 million that we're behind in an annualized basis? How much of that is sworn and how much of that is non-sworn?
Can you give us an idea of the $5.6 million that we're behind in an annualized basis? How much of that is sworn and how much of that is non-sworn?
Let's see, that's a great question. Allow me to kind of look offline to see if I can give that to you in more detail. Next question?
Do we have another question while we're waiting? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Jasbeck, for the presentation. My question is regarding all the different pay grades compared with the nearby municipalities. Which pay grades are the one that they are more behind? And which are the one we are ahead? And ideally, to know all of them. So it's good to have an average, but it's also good to understand which pay grade, are we more competitive or less competitive compared with the surrounding municipalities?
Sure. So in the presentation, there wasn't necessarily the visual space for it. But in the report, Councilmember, I did provide an exhibit. It's in Chapter 4, Exhibit 4B, I believe it was, where it shows you those differentials per classification. So if you see that positive differential, it shows that that those classifications were fine with regards to the market or less behind, if you will. And if you saw a negative or a larger negative, that would indicate if they were even more behind the market. So I'm also looking offline. I'm sorry if I keep directing my attention to the other screen here. But for instance, IT positions were ones that could be a little bit more competitive, which is not too surprising. It's kind of a common theme that we're seeing across the country, where IT positions are paid very competitively. And you kind of have to pay a little bit higher to retain that talent and keep them from going to the private sector. So that's an example of one area where we saw that we, that the city was a little bit more behind on the salary ranges.
Additional questions? While we're looking up the answer to Councilmember Tizer. Yes, Councilmember Wilsie.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much for the presentation and for the research that you've done. Because my question is going to continuing on those lines about IT. Did you find, were the findings fairly consistent in functional areas and level within the, depending on, I guess, functional level and also job responsibilities across all departments? With the exception of the sworn officers.
So I guess the short answer to that is it kind of depended. Overall, there was definitely some, overall, we saw that the positions were a little bit behind the market. Some of the more technical positions were certainly a little bit more behind the market. And those were the ones where we, in addition to adjusting their pay grade by 9%, said, you know, they really need to be moved up another pay grade to make sure that they remain competitive with the market.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Fisher.
Mayor, in regards to Councilmember Tizer's question regarding how much is public safety and how much is, or how much is other departments, all we have right now listed is the total general fund. So we have it broken out by funds. It's not, it's certainly something that we can get and put back together. But in this report, the way we looked at it was by funds. So I don't think we're going to have that answer for you this evening. But we'll get it to you shortly. It's not a hard thing to get, we just don't have the information in front of us.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you. It's fine. I'm interested in seeing that, you know, when it's available. Just one thing I'd like to perhaps call everyone's attention to. Is it possible for you to flip back to page 10 or 11? I can't remember which one it is. It's the one that shows the list of grades and their ranges.
Are you talking about the report?
No, in your presentation.
Okay, yes, sir, just a moment.
We'll leave this exhibit 2A. It's, I think it's on page 8 in the document that we were sending. Is that right?
This is fine. This is fine. So I'm going to point out something that's very obvious, probably to most of us. But for anyone listening, I think it's important to note. If you look at the maximum proposed, or the maximum, doesn't matter if it's proposed or the normal, of pay grade 501, the maximum is 39 to 49. You can jump up five or six, almost seven more pay grades, and you could still have the same salary. So if you'll move, and this is the general employee. And if you move to the sworn officer or the sworn chart, which I think is on the next page, you will see that a PS1 can be paid 62,600. Or you could almost get into the PS7 range with the same salary. That's not abnormal, that's kind of a normal thing that you'd see. That's a, that's a, that's a pretty big spread. And it always strikes me as interesting that organizations spend a lot of time creating these. But there is significant, significant overlap between grades and people from way at the beginning, almost to the middle of a career progression. And I just wanted to point that out for people to see. Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Seeing no hands up, thank you all for the presentation. Very enlightening, and I know we'll all study it and take it to heart. We are adjourned on this work session.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.